And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in the council chamber is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raised hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in their upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click the button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand in the right place.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the constitutional rights and information that governs our country. We are a free, open, and justiciable democracy.
Can you please call the board?
Mayor Skelly?
Here.
Councillor Delabose?
Here.
Councillor Fisher?
Here.
Councillor Kennedy?
Here.
Councillor Powers? Councillor Reish?
Here.
Councillor Scamperley?
Here.
Coram present.
Councillor Powers has asked to be excused because he is out of town. Is there a consensus of council to excuse Councillor Powers?
Yes.
We have several presentations tonight, and we will begin with Augenthalberg Land Bank Corporation Chairman Philip Caswell.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you very much for allowing us to come in front of you tonight and kind of go over our annual report as I hope you've all had a chance to read. It includes a report, an inventory of our current properties, and also a rough idea of how much it costs us over the last year to do some of the demolitions that we've been doing, not only last year but the year before. One item is not included, and it will be done shortly, is our 2021 audit that we should have by the end of the weekend. You'll all be getting a copy of that as soon as you receive that. That will also go to the state as part of the requirement for the land bank. Don't want to go through line by line the report we sent. Obviously, I just wanted to hit some highlights, not only to let you folks know, but obviously the public that may be watching or even for future stories. As you're aware, we received approximately $1.1 million a couple of years ago from the state. And in addition to that, we recently received some money from the local Habitat for Humanities that unfortunately is no longer in operation in St. Lawrence County. So that money was about a $48,000 infusion to us. So the good news there, obviously, it's a lot of money. The bad news is we pretty much spent it all. Not that it's bad news, but that, you know, our coffers are getting low. But I think we've done some great things, and in 2021, we were very busy. We still have properties sold or to sell, but we sold three side lots in 2021 for an average of roughly over $5,000 each. And we currently have three side lot properties left, again, mainly being sold to the adjacent property owners, hopefully. In the area of demos, again, we were very busy in '20 with demos. Last year, in 2021, we did three demos, and we have one other one that we're in the process of. One of the sheets we handed out, it gives you an idea of what it cost us to do the demos. The $20,000 is actually a lower number than it was the year before. I guess we're just doing better. The contractors are doing a better job of that. But $20,000 each to tear down what probably would fall down relatively soon if we didn't do it, you know, is a savings there. And if it is a side lot sale, it does enhance the property for the adjacent property owners. If it's going to be a buildable lot, we will keep it in the inventory and going forward, hopefully have something to put on that lot. In the area of residential rehab, we had several projects that we're involved in. One of them was 625 Franklin Street. And ultimately, after reviewing it, we decided that was probably a bigger project than we wanted to tackle. The estimates we got for ultimately renovating that was just well above what we could put into the project. So the board decided to sell that to the private sector and let them take that. And we do have a buyer, and that should be transferred relatively soon. We're in the process of renovating 416 Green Street. That's the old synagogue on the corner block, and it is going along very nicely. That will be a bigger project than we first estimated as well, but we're still in the process of deciding whether we want to go to a full renovation or get it to the point where someone may want to come in and say, you know, I'll take it from here. We've got other plans for it, you know, than what you might have wanted to do with it. But if we can get it to a point where someone can see that it could be usable for residential space, I think we've done our job, and hopefully that can happen. If not, we will keep it in our inventory, and hopefully, as we get funds, maybe do something as a total build out on that one. Also, we just received a purchase offer on 332 Park Street. I think that's turned out to be a very good project. That was the Red House. We called it on the corner of Park and Green. And that one has been on the market for a very short time, and we did receive a purchase offer. And hopefully, that will be closed in the relatively quick or recent future. So that one will be back on the tax roll. The other one that we are involved with in the area of renovation is a house that had a fire recently. We, along with the city and the county housing, North Country Housing Council, are joining with the homeowner to get that house renovated, and that's done. And hopefully, that family can be back in their house soon. In the area of new construction, we have the two Bosse's houses, one that we went in with them on, the one, the Bosse's here in Augsburg, and then we bought the house from the Bosse's and Governor. We have those on two sites. One is on Ogden, and the other is on Berry Street. Those houses will be done to a point where we can set a price for them, and hopefully, those will be sold sometime this summer as we get going on those and get some heat in there and some other items. So those are the, as I said, that has been quite a busy time for us. We've had a lot of help from the city, a lot of in-kind help, a lot of people help. Andrea has been a big help for us coordinating this with the contractors, the grant agencies. You know, again, that's been a big help to us going forward. As I said at the beginning of the presentation, funding is going to be a problem. The state has run out of the money that originally funded us, so we are doing everything we can. We're applying for whatever grants we can. And that brings us to a question of city-land bank partnerships. I mean, I think having us out there and being able to get through the red tape and the timelines and the various laws that affect municipal governments doing this type of work, whether it's the prevailing wage rates or sales tax or having to pay the school and the county property tax for parcels you may own that are not government-used for government purposes, those are all things we can do rather quickly and without all the red tape. So in that vein, we've been kicking around the board and talking about whether there may be a time when we could look for some actual dollars. And I'll throw the number out of $100,000. I like to throw out a higher number, but I know everybody's in a tough situation these days and everything. But, you know, with us being able to do all this work with demolitions costing 20-plus grand per building, you know, I mean, that money won't go that far. We will look at other places for money, state, federal, whatever we can to do, you know, what we need to do. But again, this land bank was set up with the idea that, you know, we will not break even on any of these structures that we are trying to get back on the tax roll. The city's been good to us in the fact that they are able to give us those parcels, so we aren't laying a lot of money for the initial purchase of those properties. But we are not able to sell them in this economy for what we have to put into them to get them back on the tax roll. That's the sad part. So there's always going to be a little bit of a cost overrun. If we were a profitable business, we wouldn't be, I mean, if we were in it to make a profit, we wouldn't be making, we wouldn't be here because I just can't do that. So it has to be a combination of various things, funding-wise, work-wise, in-kind. And again, we appreciate everything the city's done. But if we want to keep the program going, we're going to have to ask everybody and anybody that we can. And that will be our pitch to the city as far as any kind of monies going forward. Whatever can be, we'd appreciate it, and again, we will try every other source that we can going forward as well. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell for 2021. If anyone has any questions or ideas or whatever, and if you can't think of them now, feel free to give us an email or a call.
Well, Phil, I think it's a wonderful program. It's an awesome project.
Well, and we do too. And again, as I've said several times before, it's a state program. So we took it on as, you know, a little bit of a concern, but it has worked out very well. It's one of the best ones the state's ever given to the local communities to work through and get over it.
They're not going to fund it?
Pardon?
They're not going to provide?
The money, the original monies we received were from fines that they imposed during the 2008/09 housing, you know, where mortgage companies and banks were, I don't say defrauding, but they were less than honest on what their packages were. So they basically fined those banks for the misrepresentations, and that money has dried up. There's 25 of the land banks throughout the state. We are one of those, and we are the last one. And we're the only one that's only within one municipality. Most land banks are a joint effort between either a couple towns, villages, county or two, and they fund them. Those individual entities within their land bank will fund the administration of those land banks. We don't have that. We have a land bank that's strictly within the boundaries of the city. So the funding for us was the original monies, which again, has now dried up. And now we're looking for any place and anywhere we can get it, so.
You're doing a great job. The land bank is making a visible difference in our city.
Well, and just in weeding out some of the ones that needed to be weeded out is an improvement in some of the neighborhoods. It's an old city. Houses are right on top of each other. Some folks take care of them, some don't. Obviously, the ones that are just about falling down need to come down.
Yes.
And we'll do everything we can to do that. Again, it all comes down to the dollar, as everyone says, follow the dollar.
So on the city's end, if the city can help out at all, the way that it would in return help the cities, we're taking property off the tax rolls that we would otherwise have to make the, at least the school board hold now, maybe not so much the county, but.
Well, while we own it, it would be exempt from that. Once we sell it or, you know, convert it or the adjacent property buys it, if it's a side lot, it'll be back on the tax roll. Whereas, well, as long as you own it after, I think it's three years, if it's not used for a municipal purpose, the taxes have to be paid to the other jurisdictions.
So, Phil, just a couple of things.
Sure.
The Financial Restructuring Board has, you know, left wide open for us the ability to appeal to them for things. So I think there's an opportunity there, but it goes hand in hand with this next thing I'm going to say, which is, if you've been following, you know, we're out of the property tax foreclosure business. So while it's still in the city's interest to make sure properties get back in the tax rolls and get taxes, the truth is, they'll be in control of the properties that people don't pay taxes on.
Right.
So they got $20.9 million sitting over there in ARPA funds that they haven't done a thing with. So it's time that organizations like yours can help for it.
That's definitely a source of funding. You know, they will, like you said, they will own the property if it has, and, you know, we need to deal with them, and I don't think they want to keep it off the tax rolls either.
And the city doing it for all the years has benefited them because instead of, you know, at least one chunk of property they didn't have to be responsible for, but they'll have them. So they should really be incentivized by wanting to fund you some of that money. And then what I think Andrea and I can work on the other side with them is that, as we are making this transition to them, that they're not happy about, but it's going to happen, the Financial Restructuring Board providing a grant to help with that transition. From our perspective, I don't know that there's a lot that the city would need to have reimbursed, but I think, again, helping the entity that will keep, that's been keeping the load off of our surplus property list, help with theirs. So I think kind of tagging up with that, hitting them up. Where they get the money from, I guess, is their business, but they've got $20.9 million in that ARPA fund that could be. And I don't, asking for $100,000 is generally right. That's three or four teardowns. I mean, you really need to get half a million to a million dollar infusions going in.
We didn't want to be two.
Well, it's got, and you know, the county attorney will probably be able to support you well on this. The whole act of foreclosure is not a cheap process by any stretch. So any property that they don't have to move through the foreclosure process and then be responsible for the liability for. So I think there's a great case, and certainly, we can get a resolution to request council support that to them. But I think it's another, you know, kind of another follow-up issue.
Something we'll definitely look at. I think Councillor Reish had a question.
Well, if we wrote a community development block grant this year or any other type of housing grant, I don't know, would they be the right agency to administer that for us and do that type of work, whatever we apply for? I mean, obviously, some of it's infrastructure, you know, but the housing component, I just soon turn it over to them and let them do what they're doing such a good job at.
Yeah, I think it only comes down to a question, Councillor Reish, of administration for them. How much can they take on? If you, when you get time to look at the portfolio that's going on, I mean, the back few pages in here tell a story, which they've got a lot of projects, which is honestly, from my perspective, a lot of projects that we don't have to manage. So certainly thankful for that. But the answer is yes, they're an entity that could do it. I think we've been using some of the housing agencies to do some of those, and while the land bank's been focusing on taking these, you know, moving these kind of wholesale.
Could we get Dank or the County Planning Office to do a presentation at our next meeting on how they can assist us with writing those grants?
Sure. Anything else?
Andrea, didn't we have some housing money from another grant that was, you were having a hard time getting out of the door? I forget.
No. Now, you and I spoke briefly about the mortgage forgiveness, which was a program where the city had loaned money. Excuse me, there's a process now to get that forgiven, but it wasn't a fund. It was loans that we had taken, put against people's property to do renovations. Long story short, the state said, you can't do that, so there's a forgiveness program. But we don't have any money sitting idle on a housing program anymore.
So there's nothing that could be reprogrammed?
There's no money anywhere.
The lots that were the $5,000, which is the adjacent property owner, did that, if they bought it for five grand, did it have to be attached to the ones they had?
We did make that a proviso, and we paid for that. Because we didn't want it further down the line. If they wanted to let go of it, they just don't pay the taxes on that parcel. So we made it somewhat easy for them in that we would pay for the property to be combined. Whereas before, that was one of the major roadblocks when the city was trying to get people to combine the two. They were just, some of them would not do it for that reason. So we made it kind of an easier sell that way, so.
It is usually people get scared when their property expands to a point where their value goes up.
Well, and we, you know, you should check with the assessor and that type of thing. It's not usually been a major increase. I mean, anybody looks at their tax bill, you'll notice the land is a very small portion of the total bill, if there's, you know, if there's a building on it. So, but we do, you know, we do tell them to check with the assessor to see what their plans are for it and how that may impact them. I mean, that's part of their due diligence. They should look at that before they put a bid in on a parcel.
Mayor, so to the request for $100,000, Angela and I and Andrea will look at that. I think there's a number of options potentially. We have to get the housing authorities some money this year, so we'll come back within a meeting or two to counsel with a recommendation on how the city can directly provide some funding as well as support their request to other entities, especially, I think, the county is the most significant pot we need to go after.
Appreciate your.
Thank you very much. We have a skate park update that will be done by Director of Painting and Development, Andrea Smith.
Just before we get to the skate park, one quick comment about the assessments on side lots. When the property is combined by deed and it's sold, and then the buyer actually sells the property to themselves, it's all taken care of for them, as the chairman just mentioned. But in instances, most of our side lots that are sold are sold to homeowners, so that the property is their primary residence, and they actually receive the star benefit on the newly combined property, so it keeps their tax rate lower than if, or their tax lower than if they had kept it as a separate taxable parcel, just as vacant land. So just a little added point. For those that are attending, see that there is a handout provided in the webinar. This is a copy of the presentation that was given by staff to council on October 25th, and the council has been provided with a hard copy of this presentation. This presentation is a summary of the work that staff had done throughout the summer and fall of 2021 regarding potential locations for skate parks, for a new skate park. And the only real update that I have for you from this presentation from October is, to be full, we haven't gotten a lot of comments from council, so. But this has been presented to the Recreation Commission, who did meet. Having been newly appointed by the council, they met on February 10th and have reviewed the sites that were presented to the community and to council as a whole. We really focused our discussion with the commission on the very last page of the handout, which are the staff's two primary recommendations, that being the sort of area of parkland between the twin bridges just off of, just off of the Maple City Trail, and I would call that north of the pedestrian bridge behind the downtown mall area. And then site number two, which is the now vacant space where we formerly had 212 Ford Street. Those were staff's two recommendations for council based on community feedback and feedback from council. And having presented these two options to the Recreation Commission, the commission is most supportive of pursuing site number one, which again, is the sort of parkland off of the Maple City Trail, just north of the pedestrian bridge behind the downtown mall area. It's a large area. It's almost, it's more than double the square footage that the previous skate park was. So the question, I guess, to council is, it's too late this year to think about any type of a new skate park from staff's perspective that would be available for use in the summer 2022 season. But if it is council's goal to have a new skate park available this time next year, we really need feedback from council as to where you'd like staff to start devoting time and attention to developing a design and a budget so that we can identify funding sources and appropriately appropriate funds in the 2023 budget. So this has been represented to council in an effort to garner your feedback as to which direction you want to go, whether it's have a new skate park or keep the skate park that we currently have in its location adjacent to the arena.
I fully support option one. I think I like the area of it, and I supported that the last time. We had a similar discussion. I talked to, I think if we're appointing the rec commission or, you know, these people are donating their time, I think we should take their feedback. And if that's what they feel is best, I mean, then I support that.
Yeah, I like it. I'd support that.
Is there water and sewer near there?
Well, we'll have to do a full analysis. Really, step one will be to reach out to DOT because it is located within the right-of-way of the bridges to make sure that they don't have any concerns or comments or conditions that we would have to work within. So that would be step number one, but there's not a lot of point in making those types of phone calls and having that level of discussion with the state if it isn't a site that at least has the majority support of council. So that's step one, and then obviously, looking at what we have for available infrastructure and what we might need based on, again, kind of some budgets and some concepts.
I like it where it is. You know, I don't know what the cost would be to extend utilities onto DOT land.
It's not DOT land. It's city property. It's just within the DOT right-of-way for those two bridges.
That's number one, is what you're saying?
That's a dog.
Number one's too, I don't think that's a good area, only because it's too far away from ice, that area, and then there was, it's just got the trail walking that way and that way. Used to be a whole bunch of trees in here, and half the time you're coming around, the trees in there used to have like little apples on them. They'd be backing them at the cars. There's no way you're gonna, you're gonna be able to really watch the peak because it's down there, and it'll cost you more supervision. That spot's crazy. I won't.
I'd really like to see when the cheese plant comes down, that, you know, we do a regional recreation center, and I'd like to see a part of that, but that's something I know.
Where did most people support? Was it the interior?
It was 55% was anywhere in the Greenville area.
I mean, there was really no clear consensus. There was, for as many people that wanted it where it was, and equal, I think it was 21% wanted it where it was, 25% said, do not put it back where it was. So, but most people said they wanted it in the Greenville area, downtown area.
The nice thing is, when we develop a recreation center, you know, you have all the infrastructure there, the waters, and you'd have other people having activities and, you know, I don't know, just have a lot of activities in one place. It's kind of neat, you know, it's like having a gathering every day, different residents enjoying themselves, but it's ways out.
Yeah, which is certainly something we can do and continue as part of the conversation. But I think that council just needs to kind of give that directive so that we have a response to the public. If that is the directive of council that we're going to hold off on any kind of permanent relocation until we have more definitive plans for a regional recreation facility, that's the direction of council. But that means that in 2022, 2023, 2024, it's not likely that you would have a skate park other than what we have now. And we do know, and we knew prior to relocating the skate park, that the equipment in that area was reaching the end of its useful life and was going to be in need of replacement. So it's not a dissimilar conversation to what we're having when we talk about Kids Kingdom and needing to replace that playground and using the Ready Project as the opportunity to do that. So things do not last forever, and they have really served the community well, but we do need to start thinking about what the future looks like for them. One, are we going to continue to have it as an amenity for our community? And two, where will it be? And when those decisions are made, staff can start to think about the budgets and bringing you additional information about design.
And I, you know, if we do go with that idea, and it is, whatever we do, I think we do need to invest some money in that existing skate park, whether it's trying to rebuild it to a better condition or sink some money into some new stuff, which could be transferred to a new location. But yeah, that equipment really does need some effort, you know, to hold us off.
Get somebody in there, get an estimate. See what it actually needs to just, you know, to get it back for a little bit longer.
Any consensus on that and put some money into the existing equipment?
Well, I think we should do that, because if we don't do that, then we should shut it down. It definitely lost its shelf life, and it's not there. And I definitely support location, so at the same time.
I'm in itself, and I'd like to restore that equipment to where it can last longer and then see where we go with that. next attempt into DRI.
I think it's, it's part of our due diligence to make sure that these kids have something to utilize. So I think that making sure that it's safe and usable should be our number one priority. And then we need to look to making it better, more appealing, safer. But I think at first and foremost, we need to make sure it's usable.
Just depends on the cost.
Do you want to bring a resolution up for the next time?
No, just, I, I make a motion that we put the, do get an estimate, make the thing safe. Since we've, we've said in public that it's possibly passing shelf life and people are talking about safety and concerns about the equipment that they were using last year. If you don't, I think you're gonna put yourself in a really odd position for somebody to get. So for the time being, fix it and let's go from there. Do you have a second?
So, yeah, I don't think we have any, no, no necessarily any formal action for that. I think we were going to do that. I think we're just, we're trying to make sure that we really need the future goals, so.
At least the public will know that we're going in that direction, that we'll have something for them to use. Instead of them, everybody wondering and, and not, not knowing, because I didn't know and neither did.
So I think it's two topics and so I, I mean, I think we got the message on we'll, excuse me, we'll move forward quickly to upgrade what's there and safety it and perhaps fence it and get some cameras. We'll, you know, we'll make it a little more of a permanent site. But I, I think just again, we, we're, we're just beating around the bush here a little bit about the site. There needs to be some kind of direction. I, I was just, I'll, this will go to the shelf and not come back until I hear from council again. I, I'm resurrecting this. A lot of people came to the meeting, hooted and hollered. A lot of people up in this dais had a lot of forward things to say about it, but we're, it's sort of dying on its own. So do we have a site? Do we not have a site? Where do we want it? Is the mayor's suggestion, leave it alone till we decide on region recreation? Do we vote? I mean, I just think, again, this, from, from tonight forward, I don't, staff won't bring this back unless we're, unless we're asking.
Which is off of Caroline Street.
What was that? What did the public have to say about that?
The number four was, I think a lot of the homeowners that were behind that property were worried about the noise and things like that. And I mean, personally, I think if my home was sitting on that property in Washington or Riverside and then you had that directly behind you, I think that would be kind of a distraction and kind of, you know, quality of life issue. So I don't think I would support that just because if that was my home, I don't know if I'd want that directly behind me. Just like how loud a skateboard can be or bike, or scooter.
My concern there is we have a developer that has a green tract. So that person may have a skate park there and what, what they're gonna do. I understand that they want to build a green, green project there. It may not, may not work next door. So I'm, I'm sticking with one. I think it's a good location.
Yeah. So should we get a consensus on?
I'd just soon fix up what we have and, and wait it all. Yeah. I mean, you're gonna need money for it anyways. So might as well put it in the DRI. Good to hear.
I, I do think, you know, if we're successful, I mean, that could be an amazing complex, you know, we're all, all agents.
I don't disagree with that at all.
So I think we'll plan to, to bring back down a plan to, to tighten up what we have now, modernize the equipment, safety it, make sure the area's got proper lighting, surveillance and all the things that, that, you know, we've all talked about it, it all should have. So I think we'll, we'll bring that back and then we'll just keep the skate park, new skate park concept alive as we're moving, you know, kind of the future planning for, for where we go with this. It's, it's, as Andrea alluded to, I just, I don't want to spend the last half time rooting out utility questions or who likes it, who doesn't like it, what are the impacts if they're not, you know, even in the realm of the possible. So, so, but we'll, we'll, yeah. Okay.
Thanks.
City long-term debt, City Control, Andrew Gray, and City Banjo Steve Jowell will present the case.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. So tonight we have put together a presentation regarding all the long-term debt within the city, both that we have issued right now and that we're planning on coming up within the next year or so. Just to give you a high level perspective of everything, the cost of the debt to the city and just a little bit of how this interplays with the capital projects that we have going on. So on the second page, we start with the current debt obligations. The very first one listed is 2019 ban. So the history on that one is the original borrowing of that ban was $2 million. It was borrowed at a time when there was flood damage along the shoreline. That project was expected to be about 700, and we borrowed 2 million. There's about a $1.3 million gap there. The bans are renewable every 12 months. So every single year, the city sits down and says, let's renew this, let's pay it off. We have that decision to make at that point in time. This ban has been continually renewed each year since inception. Due to the financing laws, we have to start paying principal at some point in time. For the city, this was in 2021. So we will have effectively, are scheduled to pay this ban off through those rules in 2023. Since its inception, the city has, and this will be through the end of 2022 fiscal year, we will have paid $123,000 of interest on this borrowing. This is coming up for renewal here in two weeks roughly. We need to consider, the principal payment on that is $570,000. It'll leave left to pay $590,000. So the city's right now considering the length of time for which we issue a new ban. We have the opportunity to choose a timeframe between 60 days and 12 months. The kind of the thought is to do a six-month renewal and let the money come in from FEMA and pay off the rest of that and try to save some interest in that respect.
So how, what have we used that for then?
On this project within the Lake Ontario flooding.
So we, we have spent the 2 million then?
We have not. We've only spent a portion of that. So there are still some funds sitting there. But we have also paid back principal. So we've paid back 900,000 roughly in principal.
So how much did we spend on the Lake Ontario?
Around 466 with more to spend.
So the other 1.5 million?
Correct.
What, what is that earmarked for?
It's right now being used to repay the principal. We're kind of working through in the next month, more work, kind of digging down into the capital project fund to give you a more concise report on that.
We've already paid off some of it. I mean, I don't, I'll just, I'll give the blunt presentation of it. We borrowed $2 million on a project that wasn't expected to exceed 700,000. No logic, no rhyme, no reason. Likely we need a cash flow to fund things that were shortfallled. Our contributions, our matching funds, whatever it was, not, not an appropriate way to, to take bans.
So was it a bond anticipation note that became a bond?
It has not yet become a bond. So it's a band.
So why, why can't, why can't we just give that money back and not have to pay it back?
We will. So it's, it's maturing now and I'm just trying to, to make sure now is that we will get the money back that we spent the reimbursement from FEMA and then that we have enough funds on hand in the capital fund to, to pay it back. So I, I don't anticipate that we're gonna renew this, other than like Angela said, perhaps for as much as six months, only to make sure that I get back in the 450 or $500,000 that we have coming in from, from FEMA. So it's, um, it's, it's one I don't anticipate we're gonna, we're gonna do long-term. I just want to make sure we get our money in from, from FEMA on this project to be able to close it out. We've, part of the reason this, this particular project, not to be confused with the ban, project wasn't closed out is because there's work that would be done that we'd have to undo when we do the ready project, if we finish the project on the, on the boardwalk. So we're just trying to make sure that all synchronizes. But the answer to where is the money gone? We've paid back, the bond was 2 million, our balance is 1.1. We've paid back a good portion of it. But we're trying to determine where initially did the, what was the other money earmarked for that got used? At some point it was out there in circulation. It wasn't, it wasn't just sitting there likely. It was, it was used to pay other obligations or things. So we're trying to, to run all that backwards because it goes back to 2017, 2018 timeframe.
The next ban that we have, excuse me, sir.
I said, okay, I guess.
We'll circle back with a, a, some more. We've got more to present at a later timeframe on some of this stuff. So as we've reached, to talk about capital projects, it'll come back up. The 2020 ban that was originally issued in 2021 was issued to cover the 5% match of the $8 million ready project. So that is money expected out of the city's funds for that project. That original issue was at 3.25. We just renewed this ban for 12 more months at a rate of 2.5. So we did see a drop in interest of that over the course of two years. Having this $415,000 outstanding, the city will have paid about $24,000 of interest before this comes up for renewal again in 2023. The 2012 bond that's, yeah.
So on that one, the same thing. We, we took a ban to be able to cover our portion of the project. An eight point something, $3 million project that we have to pay about $425,000 until we, we took this ban. This one will pay out and it won't be renewed next year. We just got our first grant dispersment agreement from the state. It allows us to draw down on the Maple City Trail for the crescent part of the ready project. We expect hopefully within the month, the grant dispersment agreement, maybe two months on the, on the Greenbelt project of it. And then we can largely recoup all this money that we spent in the engineering costs to, to go out there. But I, I want to say again, from my perspective, another, another piece of borrowing that just, just shouldn't have occurred. We're, we're borrowing money for our match that we're paying interest on. We're gonna have to pay this sooner or later. This isn't money that we're not going to pay out of the general fund. We have to budget for it at some point and pay it. Borrowing for it, adding interest to it is only adding expense to it. And the potential to convert it into a bond, if, if, if it weren't for the fact that we now have a significant amount of money and, and the cost overruns on that with, with the prices going up and the additional things we want to do, it, it really would seem silly that we, we borrowed this small amount of money on what was an $8 million grant. So we just, we just need to be, to be very close.
That was the original match though, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. It's now 3.4 million or something like that.
Well, so match, not to be confused with just the, the project costs that have, that have gone up, yes. So, so it'll all be part of that, but I, it's just this short-term borrowing, you know, has a pretty significant cost to it. You see 123,000 on this last one. I mean, this one's 10 or 12,000. So it's just borrowing money on these things that we, we've got to begin to budget for. If you track back in the 18, 19, 20 budgets, there are no budgeted amounts for capital outlay in there. Not just individual projects that we might be doing, but capital outlay has to include our portion of any of these large projects that are, that are likely largely grant funded. They have to appear in the general fund somewhere to be able to, to use those funds. Unless the, unless the philosophy is we're gonna, we're gonna ban for everything or bond, ultimately convert these bans into bonds.
So your next bond is a 2012, we call it the 2012 bond. Really this bond came about in 2002, 11 years to payment. I'm sorry, when there was 11 years left to pay on this in the year of 2017, this bond was renewed. At that point in time, the interest rate dropped from 4.5% to 2.5%. This too, obviously bears some interest. Since 2017, the city has paid 170,000 of interest on this particular bond. This bond is not callable. What that means is we have $500,000 balance remaining. We cannot pay that off early. So we're locked into paying that to full term, which that will be paid off in 2023. We'll make a payment this year and the payment next year on that one. The next bond is your 2016 bond. This bond was a refinancing of a 2007 bond. At that point in time, the initial bond had an interest rate of 4.375 and that rate was dropped to 2.5%. The bond on this one was 1.685 million, the initial issue. Again, a non-callable bond. So we're, there's no chance to refinance this, to pay it off early. We're just sitting back within the terms of that agreement. The 2018 bond, that one was a bond for $438,000 used to purchase equipment and some improvements at the library. As of today, there's $330,000 left to pay on that bond. It does not mature until 2028. We do have the option for the first time in the life of this bond, might not be the first time, but the next time that we can choose to call this bond is in 2025. So three years from now, about this time, it would actually be, if we want to call a bond, we have to give notice about six months ahead of time. So in October 2024, council will need to sit here and decide what to do with this. If we want to take it full term or we want to call it. Once that is, decision is made, we're, we're stuck with whatever decision we make at that point in time. The next bond is your 2019 bond. The original, that was just shy of 1.2 million. That one matures in 2029. It has an interest rate of 3%. There's $990,000 outstanding on that one. And this particular bond is callable in the year of 2027. So again, that same timeframe, late fall 2026, council will need to decide at that point in time if it's something they want to call or keep on paying at the stated terms. I put at the very bottom of this slide what the anticipated principal payments are. So this is not your full debt service. This is just the principal portion for each one of the years. We are currently paying in principal 1.1 million in 2022, this current year. And next year, that is expected to be 1.5 million based upon the increase in paying off, namely that $415,000 ban.
Any, no, no guess on the interest and?
Excuse me?
No guess on the interest and all of?
No, I don't have to guess. Let me see. I do have that for you. One second. The current interest budgeted for the current year only is roughly $150. Those are broken up between funds. So you'll see what we attribute to the general fund, water fund, sewer fund and also the capital fund as well. So any questions on that? Okay. Moving ahead to looking forward, we have future debt obligations of the city. In the past couple of months, we've committed to borrowing additional funds. In summary, we've committed to borrowing $3.9 million through bands to support the ready project. The ready project will be about 3.1, call it 3.2 million of that number. Whereas the repayment of that is not expected to be supported by grants. Contrary to the $1 million ban that was approved for the NBRC, 800,000 of that is not supported by grants. So 200,000 of that will be. And that's where the math comes through on the side in the bright blue box of 3.9 million. So we do have an obligation that we've signed up for there as well, of $4 million to typically come out of what I would expect to be the general fund. So turning ahead, the bigger topic is the sewer fund debt. So we, the city has been working through the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. One month, around May 11th, the city will sign a note for $20 million. That note is repayable over 30 years. The annual payment that will be due on that portion of the debt will be $666,000 and change from the sewer fund. That has 0% interest. It's a 30-year payoff. What I've been working on currently with our fiscal advisors and bond counsel is whether we make a payment in the short term. We have, until this goes to long-term status, we have the option to make one short-term payment. The reason you might say, why would you do that? Is it preserve some cash in the current year? So we always come back to the sales tax issue that in the current year, we're really not, well, it's sewer rather, so that doesn't matter. But just to preserve a little bit of cash, kind of push that down the road a little bit, we can make one short-term payment, which would range, it's a tough calculation. They're working on it, but it would save a couple hundred thousand dollars probably in the current year. If we don't make a short-term payment and we elect not to, we most likely will need to do a budget amendment to increase the debt service line in the sewer fund because we, at the time we did the budget, it still wasn't known what this payment would be, so we're about $150,000 short on the budgeted debt service for this. But there should be the money and the contingency to move it over. So just to give you a heads up on that piece. The second part of that borrowing is also going to come quicker than it stays here. I spoke with E F C today, our financial analysis there. We are expecting the second funding of this does bear interest. And I'm just going to round it up. It's $13 million. So right now, that's in a short-term financing status. It was expected to convert to a long-term in 2024. However, E F C is trying to get this to close in December of 2022. So the project will be substantially complete, and that will go to long-term financing at that point. Probably not a bad thing. It's hard to say where interest rates would be in 2024, but the indicators show the interest rates are on the rise. The interest on this note is set based upon market rate on the date that we close on this. Just rough estimating, if this was today's terms, we would be looking at one and a half to 2% interest on this loan.
So sooner the better.
Sooner the better. So we are looking to, in summary, add 32,693,207 dollars to our debt load in 2022. The reality of that is that the payment to come out of the sewer fund every single year, the next 30 years, barring no changes, and these are estimates, is 1.2 million dollars. Currently, your sewer fund is covering a debt service of 250 to 270, so significant increase. And that 1.2 is on top of the 250. So you're looking at a million and a half of debt service to come out of your sewer fund.
I still think it's worth an effort, Steve. I know I'm pounding my head up against the wall, but just to write E F C about, you know, people just can't afford this. I mean, it was a, you know, and they got a huge influx of money for these programs in the federal government to refinance a portion of that as a grant. You know, I just think it's a reasonable request and it's, you know, worth writing a letter to them.
Right, we've written one. I think we should we should do it again. We should, we should again continue to appeal to the state assemblyman and the senator. These are the kinds of things that need to be worked on. We're not going to be able to steer it only so much from this level. Again, I think this council needs.
A letter to them, C C, the council and our representatives and our Washington representatives as well. Maybe they would have some.
The congressional member item window is open for all three of our federal representatives, so I think it's also something, you know, we can submit. I don't think it'll it'll have the dramatic effect that they typically like on those kind of projects. But again, I also think appealing to the county, this is a sewer system that can serve other parts, is serving other parts of the county other than just Augsburg. You know, what what their contribution could be, again, $20 million sitting there in the fund that could be used to help offset this. A million at a time will start to start to knock it down. Two million at a time would be helpful. Three million would be better. Somebody finding 10 million would be helpful, but it's it's an enormous amount of debt. What I plan to do this year is by July or August, instead of waiting to try to analyze the water fund, the sewer fund, and the general fund all at one budget time, we'll bring the the budget presentation, probably should have it July or August, to that way you can just fully analyze the sewer fund and be able to to make decisions of where the rates are going to need to go without, you know, have attention focused on on three significant areas. This is going to be a big one. The water fund will will be will be pretty stable. But I think this year council is going to have to look at this, adding that that kind of a debt payment to it. I mean, we've been looking at the projections. Our numbers have been pretty close, but now we're, you know, we're getting tighter as the project is is coming closer. And now we're really able to articulate to elected officials what the impact to the to the budget is going to be. However, we slice it, whether somebody help find us a million dollars a year to make the payment or find us the chunk to reduce it. I mean, it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, I think environmental facilities corporation is the one that determines, okay, this portion gets a grant, this gets a loan. I just think that we ought to advocate for more grant and less loan to the tune of about 10 or 20 million dollars and see what we get back for an answer. I know you talked to him at one time, but I would think a letter.
New regime, though. The governor, the governor fired everybody who was in charge, so we can appeal to a new regime.
Maybe a letter that the mayor can sign and go to the council and our representatives and just.
Just a quick, so looking at your back page on 2023, I don't want you to, but I just, it says that principal payments would be one and a half million dollars, and that's on the debt that we already owe. Right? That 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 count was so we plan 1.2 million or one and a half million. It's just, this is, this is what's owed right now where I go back on page.
Yep.
Bond chart?
Yeah, it's my bond chart, page two of them.
Yeah, page two, and where if the last two things after the total debt, you have 22 principal payments and 1.1. And then for 2023, we're looking at one point, or actually one little over one and a half million dollars for what we're already paying for.
That's to pay off that 415,000 as well, right?
Right, so in 2023, if you're looking at the total bond payments.
No, but yeah, but my my thing is, is I'm just looking at 23, the principal payments that we'll pay. It says 1.555.
Correct.
Week 49, okay? So if I tack on in the end, when we get into 2023, another one and a half million dollars.
1.2, we'd be at 2.7.
We're looking at just shy of what 2.8 million dollars of our monies that come in right off the top is gone.
To debt, correct. All right, so the last two slides I put together kind of tried to bring some of the discussions that we have full circle. We talked a lot about the tax assessment of the property, the constitution, the constitutional debt limit. So I just put together pretty high level what our actual limits are calculating at for 2022, and then tried to do a three-year projection of what we can expect our constitutional, starting with the debt limit to be in 2023, 24, 25. All of this is hinged upon, because we have to make some assumptions when we do a projection, the tax rate staying the same, and slight increases based on historical increases to your tax assessments in the city. So our debt limit that the city can borrow is $19 million, which does not include excluded debt. So there are certain debts that are excluded from this calculation, easily said water and sewer. So that's why bringing on $33 million of debt is not impacting our debt limit. It doesn't go into that calculation. So you can kind of see that in the 2024 year.
Would a bond rating agency take that into consideration, though, even though it's excluded for purposes of?
Yes, and I.
That's the problem right there.
Well, no, no, I'm sorry. They take it, they don't count against you, so I'll speak to that in just a second. So the net indebtedness this year is 4 million, looking to 7 million in 2023, and then that will drop back down. And so we can see that the percent of our limit exhausted rises and falls, but it's around an average of quick math in my head, probably about 25 to 28% exhausted in the upcoming years. The industry has a median of the amount of debt outstanding against your assessed value. So that median number, council reach is 3.1%. That's what a Moody's or somebody is going to look at. If we do that same math for Augsburg currently, your ratio is 1.5%. So you're below the median number as far as debt to assessed value of your property.
I don't know why they, not last year's Moody's rating, the one year before that. Part of their decision for the lower rating was because we had a lot of debt. I don't know if that was just language that they, you know, had in that one paragraph or, you know.
You have a lot of debt at that point in time that wasn't excludable, and you had a very small fund balance. I believe the fund balance was as low as $600,000 on a 15-plus million dollar general fund budget, so.
But we have even more debt now or.
You have a stronger fund balance. Your debt is terming out. The interest rates are lower. When these are renewed, they're often renewed at a lower interest rate. So just the strength of the operations financially is what's helping that Moody's rating.
But we're also nearly doubling the debt that we had on the books because if we don't get any grant money for these, you know, the ready projects going ahead, then we're basically doubling, which is which is shown here, right? I don't think that.
No, no, because they were bands, they did not, they're not necessarily in this calculation, correct?
Right, but they will be converted.
To a bond, but it's hard to say why, because this is a significantly long project.
Yeah.
So to not muddy the waters, I kind of just, for a simplistic presentation, sort of took the knowns that we have right now and extrapolated those out three years.
Where is the, where's the debt limit in state law that is 7%?
Where it's specifically like what section?
Yeah.
I don't know the section, but I have read it.
Okay, I just said, you know, I was looking around. It's all a lot of stuff on it. It's a certain percentage, so I didn't know if they did it different for every community or.
No, the only people that I think have a difference are New York City, and theirs might be seven and a half in that metropolitan area. But it's specifically written into the law, both of these rates are.
And isn't it the taxable assessed value?
That is correct, yes.
How is that defined? I mean, to me, that would mean you wouldn't count non-taxable. Like, I mean, we're, if 60% of the value of our assessments are not taxed, then we get, you know, the same. How is, you know, how is that a good way to, for us to estimate, like, we're okay or we're not okay when?
Yeah, so the interesting thing, I think your question is, if we look at where we are as a percentage of total taxable assessments, we're at this 1% value. If we want to go up to the median number, we could borrow a lot more money and be at 3% of that. However, to you that even though statistically we can support based on a median average, right, this level of debt, the general fund and the water and sewer fund cannot sustain those borrowings. We're able to exclude some water debt. We're able to exclude some sewer debt. Had we included all of that debt, we are far in excess of our debt limit.
So on on the non-excluded part, the eight, let's call it, what is it, 4 million and then another 4 million coming up, shouldn't we, shouldn't we be basing our 7% on the taxable value versus the entire assessment rule, which we're not going to get any taxes from?
No, and we absolutely do. So when that calculation is done, it only takes into account the five-year average of your taxable assessments.
So the 60% that we're not getting any taxes on, that's not being, you're getting that 7% just from what's taxable.
That is correct, yes.
Oh, okay.
And so the next slide, one that we've covered a bunch of times, but the constitutional debt limit for us, the calculation and the computation of that, for a lot of the reasons it comes to Reese, we're just pointing out, is almost irrelevant because we'll never get there. The only way we could ever get there is if we had that 60% of assessable value on there that allowed us to borrow towards that higher limit. So you look at this and you think, well, we're not doing bad. We're low. But when you flip the chart to the constitutional tax limit and you see that we're at the max. I mean, so this year, we're at 63.9 with exclusions. But without those exclusions, we'd be at 80%. So the reality is, we couldn't increase our debt higher than the limit because we don't have the ability to raise the revenue to pay the, to make the payments. So the, I had Angela present the constitutional debt limit statistic and demographic, just so you you see that it's a calculation that we have to report every year, but we will never get anywhere near. It's sort of an irrelevant calculation for us. If we had 60%, so during the financial review, if you remember, we said if we added almost double the value, double the assessable value that we tax now, then you'd have that greater room that in theory you could raise taxes or draw more revenue. Then that debt limit becomes important because now you can take on more debt because you can afford it and you can get close to that debt ceiling. We'll never get anywhere near close to the ceiling because look at where we are now in our constitutional tax limit with raising revenue. There's, we can't raise anywhere near enough revenue to make, to add a million dollars or 2 million dollars of that payment. So just to turn your attention to the to the constitutional tax limit slide, I just think this is the important one the council has to stay focused on. And even even this year, when we're at 63.9, which is good, but remembering it's with exclusions. It's because the state is allowing us to exclude certain debt from that calculation. So the ability to to take on more more money if we need to. But again, it's it's where does the money come from? Well, it comes from raising taxes or increasing the revenue. If those if those exclusions were taken away, we'd be back in the in the in the high-risk zone at 81%. We would jump that at 80%. So I say to council all the time, you should look at this constitutional tax limit without the exclusions. Because if tomorrow they went away, meaning if the state did away with the exclusion program or the exclusions are your debt, as we pay down our debt, and if you see the numbers that Angela has done here, again, while our, because our assessable value hasn't gone up, our ceiling on the constitutional tax limit isn't raising. The only thing that's being adjusted or that's in flux is the tax rate, the floor, if you will, and or the number, the exclusions that we have. And again, exclusions aren't some benefit that we get have rating it off. So so again, we're really right there, you know, from my perspective, we're really redlining. So you see, we dropped to 63.9, but in just two years, we'll be over 70, 70% again to 71, because we'll have paid down some of that debt that we're talking about, this exclusions. We won't have that anymore, so our constitutional tax limit will will rise. Now, 2024 is also the first year that we expect to see the new citywide assessment. So the property values will go up. So again, our ceiling should go up. And I don't expect us to stay at 71% because our assessable value will be greater. But but it's a pretty finite, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty finite balance that we've got. And even with all the gains that we've made over the last few years, you can see where, again, it doesn't take long for it to, for it to catch up with us.
The assessable value is based on a five-year average. So when when I would expect we see an increase in the 2024 year, we're still bringing in four lower years into the average number. So that ceiling, if you will, really won't see that big uptick in 2024. We've got to drop off some of those older, smaller years first. I do work with the Office of State Comptroller on this. They do take our report that we submit, they audit it. And I just want to bring to you her comment to me this year again was your council really needs to understand the exclusions and the impact of those exclusions going away. You'll notice on the capital purchases exclusion.
The impact of those exclusions going away?
Yes, because as we pay down the debt, the exclusion is no longer available.
The last page on the chart that I just talked about, is you see the exclusions going down from 22 to 23 to 24, you see the constitutional tax limit going back up. The impact is, is those exclusions go away, it it brings us back more into reality of what our our true constitutional tax limit is.
One of the reasons that your 2022 is sitting at 64% is because we had a one-time expenditure of $275,000 for your assessment project that qualified as an exclusion. On average, the capital purchases historically that we're able to exclude, I put a quarter million dollars in there. That's really averaged out what we spent in the funds on capital, qualified capital purchases. I mean, it ebbs and flows. It goes up over three, but, you know, I just use a 250 average. And this 275 to gar was a one-time thing that we'll be able to exclude, so that will not repeat itself.
So we really should be looking at debt to revenue ratios and see how that compares. And debt per capita would also be interesting and see how it compares with other communities. Are you able to do that?
I can do that, yes.
And yeah, so our fixed debt service costs just went through the roof. And and we're adding to it on the the general fund side as well with the ready. So we we ought to try and control ready as much as we can. So we, we ought to try and control ready as much as we can, out of control, I think. No offense to anybody, um, but certainly if we can write grants to pay for some of those things and, you know, I, I don't know if it's too late to remove the, the piling portion of it to save some money there. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's concerning for me, so. And it's truly refracted in that, the debt to revenue, I mean, when you're talking, what would you call it, with one point two million, well, one point five, I mean, and you're only collecting, I don't know, four point five million in real property taxes, I mean, that's, uh, there's other revenue, but I mean, that's your true revenue. Um, and then debt per capita, I mean, without exclusions, because it's the same people paying for the sewer plant or for all the other projects, whether they're taxes or their fees. So that's important to look at too, to give us some guidance on future projects that come up that, you know, we have to bond for or are considering bonding for.
It, it's all, and again, to, to not belabor any one meeting, so we did the financial closeout report last month along with projections, now we're giving you the debt, we'll give you capital next time. It, it all ties back together, but you, you can see what we showed in the last presentation was right now we're projecting likely a one point one to one point three million dollar gap in already planned expenses against known revenue, the revenues are, you know, I mean, to what we know today before we start, you know, our first collection of sales tax, but what our projection is on that as well, so. So I think, I think that's what we're trying to do is tile this in together, all these, all these components make up, you know, the total, the total big picture that has, has got to be considered. And, and the bond payments, again, they, they are ultimately coming from the general fund, there's no other, other pot, and obviously unless we get grants. As a, as a sidebar, we'll be sending the council, um, by the end of the week, first of next week, what our recommendations will be to go to each of the three federal representatives for the member item programs. I'm certain our number one recommendation is going to be the unfunded additional cost for the ready project, um, you know, to, to go for. Yeah, I, I, I think.
I'm fine with, I'm fine with that, if it works out with the timeframe, because you wouldn't get that money until next year.
Right, right, exactly, and, and I, I think as we talk about the sewer debt, it's good that I, but understanding how these member items need to typically be something they can put their name on and get behind, so we'll, we'll have three or four priority, uh, projects to send along and have council say yea and aye on these, but I, and I think we should try to stick to one, two, three, I don't think it does a lot of good to send a list of ten or fifteen or twenty, I think, um, we've got three representatives, two of which represent the entire state, one of which represents now about, I'm guessing she'll have fourteen, sixteen counties somewhere in this with the redistricting, so. Um, they only get, uh, eight or eight-ish projects apiece, so we want to, you know, compete for one of the twenty-four projects, and hopefully one of them will pick it up and pick it as their project and carry it forward, so, um.
I'd like to see us put in for Lake Street as well as Ready. Uh, it's just because Lake Street is infrastructure and that seemed to be what gets funded, but I don't know about Parks and Recreation, whether, I, I don't know if we'd look at it favorably or not.
I don't, I think it all depends on the.
I tried to call them and I haven't gotten a call back to ask that question. Um, but you looked at the, uh, the applications that had to be filled out, have for that and everything?
Yep.
Okay.
And they're all a little different, well, I mean, the, the, um, the Senate version is, uh, different than the, um, than the House version a little bit, but by and large, same informations. So I, so again, this kind of rounds out our debt, uh, presentation, we, we owe some additional analysis, uh, on the bands, part of that is just, as we, remember the bands are, are, are one-year financed, and so as we're trying to finite, when we're getting this agreement, when we're getting that agreement, we'll, we'll be able to bring council the recommendations. On those top two bands, I think the, you know, the closing thing again to look at this and then compare it with the financial presentation is, is just that, is our, everything, with the exception of water and sewer, everything that we do is, is coming from that general fund, so as we, as we underwrite more debt for things like ready, that's more payments from the general fund, which is also competing with everything else from an operational perspective, uh, we do, we do in the city. So there was, there was, there was no dollar, there was no surplus this year, there was no significant contingency. And, and as of right now, based on our sales tax projections, we could have a deficit going into twenty twenty-three that we'll have to, to work through, so. Um, you know, there's, there's positive news in the direction things are going, but the Achilles' heel is, is going to continue to be the amount of money, revenue we're raising for the, for the general fund and, and how that's gonna, how that's gonna fill up.
So did you say that the Maple City Trail, we've got funding for that today, as part of the ready?
We have, the, the grant dispersment agreement was approved, so we can put in our first, uh, request. Now, we haven't done a request for the grant funding until, we've got the, the grant dispersment agreement, so now we can take it to bids to get the prices, you all still have another level of approval on that project, so we won't draw off the grant, obviously, until we say yes for sure, we're going through, then we'll draw off it. So that's why again, we're, we're moving that one out a little bit more, so we're, we're one step for bringing you the, the bids on that. Hoping to get the grant dispersment agreement on the second phase, the green belt, uh, you know, within this month, or the next month, and then. For the Maple City Trail.
What's the deadline? If you don't know, I'll. Thank you, that's a very depressing presentation, but thank you.
Thank you for your time, it's not always a fun topic, but one that needs to be had.
Just be thankful that there's not the five million added on it for the pump stations. It would put you up to twenty-four million, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have some, uh, department updates. Council Mayor, thank you. Um, so I did provide a complete overview of what the police department's goals and objectives are for the year. I won't go through that line by line tonight, I just wanted to kind of bring to your attention, this, that is the overall goal of the department for the year of, uh, twenty twenty-two, um, various trainings, uh, programs, uh, we're going to participate in and, um, certain grants we're going to look forward to, uh, applying for this coming year. Uh, as far as personnel goes, we have nineteen sworn officers, which was budgeted for, for the twenty twenty-two year with zero openings. Uh, we have two dispatchers and one administrative aide. I'll break down our personnel a little bit here, um. See the flow chart that was provided, we have a, uh, a, a new model for this for the year twenty twenty-two. As far as our rank and structure, we have a chief and one lieutenant, um, that lieutenant is now overseeing the road patrol, and he is also the direct day-to-day supervisor for our investigations unit. Um, I don't see that being a long-term solution, but that is, that is our makeup for this year. The lieutenant also will be overseeing the S R O program as that is moving forward. Uh, we have our four shifts to cover, it, it's the best way of the manpower we have, I can put three officers on a shift, day in and day out, twenty-four hours a day, uh, and that, that schedule seems to work. I have three injured officers right now, I do plan on having one of these officers back full duty by the end of April and a second being back, uh, full duty by summer time, so we'll be in a lot better position, um, thankfully, with, uh, their speedy recoveries. So projects we're working on currently, uh, update our interview room cameras, uh, that actually just got completed last week. Our interview room has, um, new camera and microphones, and we also added that to a second office, which we didn't have before, so now we can conduct two interviews at once. And as the laws continue to change, we now have to have a lot more, um, of our interviews recorded every time we interview a, a, a child, that has to be reported. And, uh, most offenses now also require recording of interviews, so that was a much-needed upgrade. Um, I'll circle back to the pool cameras part, but, uh, installation of an L P R, this is a license plate reader that is part of our Operation Stone Garden grant, we'll be, um, installing, uh, another license plate reader on the outskirts of the city here, um, this spring, as soon as the weather permits a little bit, we can get some equipment in there. An officer wellness program, this is something that, uh, we are taking very serious, and we don't have this in northern New York at all. Uh, we're in talks with the sheriff's office, local police departments, and the city of Watertown, and they're all on board, we're doing a partnership and sharing resources and officers, um, it's like an employee assistance program. By all means, we're going to be on the forefront of that, as you, we all know, we've experienced loss there, so, uh, we'll be moving forward with that, um, it's a project we're looking forward to. There's a grant out there at this time, and there's a doctor at SUNY Potestam that is applying for the grant, and it's going to affect all local law enforcement, we'll have some funds to help establish this program, hopefully. Uh, police tip line, something been working on with the city clerk's office, to have a, um, if you want to be anonymous, tip through the city website instead of, uh, just, you know, I, I get emails day in and day out, which is fine, but sometimes people will give information we need under, under, you know, the, the curtain of being anonymous. So we're going to set that up, and I will be releasing a press release, the public knows how to find that and, uh, how it'll be, uh, utilized. Of course, any tip with your actual name and your address and phone number is going to hold a lot more weight than just being anonymous, so we will encourage the public to, uh, give us full information if they can, that will be monitored by myself, the lieutenant, and the two detectives. Uh, evidence room management, our property room literally has evidence, um, since the beginning of our police department. We have found firearms from the late eighteen hundreds, um, no need to have any of this stuff, so. That's been a project that we've been working on a little bit every day to clear out some of this unneeded, uh, evidence and property that we have, and of course, that's just not as simple as just throwing it out. Some things require court orders and may have to look up the disposition of the crimes that they were all utilized in, but we're getting there, um. That, that's a huge project, and that's probably our biggest hurdle for reaching the accreditation process for us to be accredited agency. Our, our evidence room would not pass right now, so that, that's our biggest hurdle, hopefully we get through that, and, uh, we'll be accredited here in the next couple of years. We're looking to upgrade our handguns here in twenty twenty-two. Smith and Wesson has decided to stop manufacturing the firearm we currently carry, so therefore they do not offer an armor's course, which our, our officers are repair our guns, and they're not manufacturing the parts to repair our guns, so. If, uh, something goes wrong with one of our firearms now, once we utilize our, our stock of what we have for parts, um, we're done, so we're looking to upgrade to the uh, Glock twenty-two, which is a forty caliber gun, which we carry now, so no added expenses as far as changing our ammunition or anything like that. Um, in-service training, uh, our big push this year that we haven't had over the last couple of years is just the basics in case law and search and seizure, uh, we're actually going to host a training in June of this year. It's cut through an organization called Street Cop Training, I actually intended that this particular training myself, uh, I believe it was a week and a half ago down in Binghamton, New York, a phenomenal training, something that every officer needs to be attending every couple of years. So we're going to bring it right up to your dog in this bridge, so of course we get an added benefit, other agencies pay for the training, we get free seats for our guys. So as far as crime trends that are going on, um, so drug use is cyclical, you have a, a increase in stimulants, that's methamphetamines, and eventually your, your depressants such as your opiates come back around, and that's kind of what we're seeing. As you've noticed, there's been less, less meth labs over the, the last eighteen months or so, we see more crystal methamphetamine, which is different than meth lab. Uh, but that's starting to slow down a little bit, and we're seeing more opioids, um, heroin and mainly fentanyl are on the rise here, we're seeing more overdoses, responding to more complaints of needles being in the roadway. So really to combat that, I mean, it, it, we'll do our best to do some community outreach, um, some education. I, I truly worry about with increasing needles, you know, utilizing, um, public garbage waste, uh, such as gas stations and whatnot, so. We'll, we'll continue to put some public alerts out there and some educational materials. And with the opioid use, it increases our petty crimes. And we're seeing lots and lots of thefts, I mean, I think everyone experienced it around, especially on the holidays, packages were being stolen like crazy, and it, it truly, it's a, it's a sad state of affairs, but they're looking for, you know, cards that might be a, a gift, that have gift cards in it or money or anything along those lines that they can utilize to feed their drug habit. And we're actually seeing an increase of actual thefts of vehicles, not thefts from a vehicle, but the thefts of the vehicles themselves. Especially over the wintertime, people leave their vehicles running to warm up, vehicles are being stolen, uh, more so than I, I've seen i- in my career, so.
Ambulances.
Even in ambulance, absolutely, and then, and then, uh, almost a tractor trailer the same day, so, uh. Again, that, that's, you gotta keep your cars locked, and we'll, we'll put more notices out on that, you know, everyone's responsible for their own vehicle, so. So those are the, really the major things we're seeing is a change from methamphetamine back to opioids, which is not good because that, that comes with overdoses, not that crystal methamphetamine's a great thing, but you don't overdose on meth, you overdose on an opioid. So that, that creates, that's concerning for, for our, um, community as a whole. So that kind of brings into our, what our problems are, so our, my investigations unit manpower, I went from a unit of three detectives, detective sergeant and a lieutenant, and currently, as you can see on the manpower chart, our investigations unit is simply two detectives. Really, I have one handling sex crimes and I have one handling, handling narcotics. And it, as Counselor Fisher noticed, even do a simple drug buy, I need, I need three officers to, to do it safely to, for surveillance. Um, I have a lieutenant who's assigned to, to supervise them, but he's also supervising the road patrol on a day-to-day, so, um, he's not always available. We do reach out to our task force, uh, members, homeland security, uh, state police, narcotics, if we can get the help, uh, to get an extra hand in the city to help us, we, we do attempt to do that. But that also comes back to the, the command staff manpower as well, so we eliminated a detective sergeant and a lieutenant, those were key supervisory staff, and it kind of helps the, uh, the investigations unit be a, a proactive unit, not just, uh, waiting for the crimes to get here, right, let's, uh, look at our, our drug dealers, they're coming from other source cities, and we want to attack them before they get to our city, so. And I know that's not an answer for today or whatnot, uh, it's a budget time issue, and I totally understand that, but I just want to keep that in your minds. Besides filling our, our, our patrols and our, filling our shifts and seeing our patrol cars around the city, there's a whole other facet of the police department that's not seen, that, uh, does a lot of key work as well. So that'd be something I'll be put, you know, bringing forward again come budget time. Parking tickets, we have discovered an issue with our parking tickets and collecting our fines, and like, as you know, parking tickets are a source of revenue for the city, and it's also supposed to be a deterrent to not park in the roadways illegally, especially overnight. So we are, been working with the city court and our city attorney, trying to establish a proper way to collect these fines. I mean, for years, we've been just sending out notices, hey, you haven't paid your fine, you need to, and it really didn't hold much teeth. Other than the honest people in town who know they parked and shouldn't have, they come in and pay their ticket. I'm going to estimate about sixty percent of our tickets aren't paid, and that's a huge amount of revenue at twenty dollars a ticket. Um, discovery and bail reform, are, um, again, it's not really so much of a problem for council as it is just for our officers. Um, we have lost some major cases as of late because of discovery. Discovery is the turning over of all evidence, um, to the defense within a certain time parameter now, and right now it's fifteen days, so you can imagine in a major case, every little piece of paperwork and whatnot getting to the defense if it, sometimes things get overlooked, you don't realize it till you pass that fifteen days, and it's no longer, well, that piece of evidence just isn't submitted to court, or that got thrown out, that your whole case got thrown out. And so that's a, a big hurdle we're, we're going over through right now. As you know, bail reform, we're releasing people on appearance tickets that used to go to county jail. Uh, I think there's going to be some changes in that, it looks that way, but again, that's part of, it's part of a package deal with the state budgets, as far as I can tell, what I'm reading from the governor's office. Hopefully there are some changes there, crimes against other persons, um, those are the subjects that need to be held accountable, and, uh, they're not currently.
So do you have a solution you're working on for the parking fines?
We are, so really, it's, it's up to the New York State Office of, um, O C A, Office of Court Administration, and our city attorney is trying to come to a solution. And our city attorney is trying to come to a solution. As far as we can tell, city court is the place where the fines should need to be collected. And that's them taking on a whole nother job, collecting those fines and dispersing them back to the city. But that, that's the proper avenue per statute where it should be, um, according to our city attorney. I agree with him, of course. So that he's working on that. Um, he's been in contact with me where it's been probably a two-month process so far and we're making progress, but. Now it's at the state level. So you all know how that goes.
Your lieutenant oversees the road patrol. That's, you have a sergeant on every shift though?
Yes, every shift has a sergeant. That sergeant's responsible just for running that shift, the day-to-day calls, responding to the calls. And our sergeants are handling calls. So I can schedule three officers on a shift. But you take into court considerations, training, injured officers, um, contractual time off and just sick leave. Most of my shifts are just two people. Um, and that's a sergeant and a patrolman. So that sergeant's handling half the calls as well. So. But yeah, the overall supervision of that road patrol, um, belongs to the lieutenant. Now, he's not involved in the day in and day out decision-making of, hey, what did you do at, you know? Mr. Rich's house when he, when he filed a complaint. It's not that in-depth. It's just the overall supervision of the, uh, road patrol as a whole. Thank you.
So the personnel in the comptroller's office is three funded positions, two of which are filled as account clerks. We are currently, um, trying to recruit for a finance supervisor to do, um, some higher level work. And that, um, we have an application, uh. Advertisement, sorry, out there, um, with applications due back April fifteenth. So hopefully we will find, um, make some headway there. The priorities within our office, um, you know, assist taxpayers and parties with payments and information that they may need. Um, maintain the accounting records of the city, probably being the largest responsibility that we have. Projects that we have going on, um, are the staff recruitment, trying to fill one position in there. We're currently working on the two thousand twenty-three healthcare insurance renewal. I, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two healthcare rates remained unchanged. Uh, we are not going to have that luck in twenty twenty-three. The fact that we had it in twenty twenty-two that we paid the same exact price for health insurance coverage. Um, when the rest of the world, their health insurance crease are increasing, you know, in double-digit percentages, it's pretty remarkable. So working to, um, see what we can do in that realm. We, March first did begin, this marked when the city began preemption on the sales tax. We will receive our first dispersment from the state on April sixth, so coming right up. And those will continue. We're due the delinquent school tax collection. Working through the different ban renewals and combined with that, the EFC long-term financing for the sewer project. And also, um, we have a project going on currently to do automated timekeeping throughout the city. So we would have a time card system, which is currently. Lacking citywide, maybe done at the departmental level, but certainly nothing that. Think we have some room for improvement there. So some of our challenges are the staffing. Um, we have two clerks in there, um, working pretty much redlined every single day. So that, um, position will be critical to help lighten the load in there. And one of the other things that I, um, in my time here have stumbled across are your historical accounting data records. You have payroll that is required to be maintained, um, forever. We do certainly have paper records in the vault, but when somebody comes back to us that wants to do with, you know, I need my time from nineteen ninety-two, maybe. Um, aside from going down and looking a couple of years on each side, um, we do have those records electronically. On a computer. That runs Windows XP that came out in two thousand one. So that, that forever. That has a substantial amount of payroll records that are also in a DOS-based program. So again, finding someone today that knows DOS, um, free Windows is, is not always an option. There's other payroll records that are out. There's a small snippet of time that's out on a web-based system. That, um, software company has sunset that program. And, um, we need to make a very fast move to secure those records. I've been working hand in hand with them, but we are not having any luck actually. Migrating those right now. That's the payroll record, your general ledger, everything else, um, that is. Currently we use a cloud-based system that goes back to two thousand nineteen. Anything computerized prior to that is on another system that sunset on December thirty-first. Twenty twenty-one. And I've worked with the owner of that company to kind of give us some more time to convert that data. Um, but again, the conversion process into our current system is not seamless. It will take some programming. Um, so I've been working through, trying to work through that, um, for many months at this point in time. But certainly, uh, no heavy lift. The, I do not have any answers for you why this wasn't done. When you did a significant software conversion back in two thousand nineteen, even working with your current company, they were shocked this wasn't done. Back then to preserve that legacy data. So that, that's a big challenge right now because it takes a lot of time and a lot of resources, um, to. Convert that data. Now again, everything's in the vault. Every check we've written and all that is on paper. But when, um, you know, we get a foil request for ten years of legal fees. It's not as easy as pulling a report. You've got to boot up an old computer, switch a monitor, you know, it's, it's not a smart pull. So trying to get all this in one central location and really repair a cut and run transition. And we're talking decades of data is, is a big project out there. So.
Are there companies around that convert that?
A lot of it's proprietary code. Um, they, so the answer is probably could be, but there's a cost to that. Um, the company on the payroll side just offered me an agreement to review. Um, that requires us to sign an NDA just to work with them, you know, so they don't want their codes out there. That's kind of the problem. They did give us a bunch of tables. Um, from a database standpoint, you, if you had the knowledge, you could put those tables together in a relational way. And build yourself an accounting system. Uh, it's time, it's money.
So the April sixth payment will only be for a very short period of time?
Correct. So within the sales tax system, the quarter starts on March one. So the very first quarter of the year is March one. To May thirty-first. Um, a lot of retailers and big, um, sales taxpayers. File a partial return from March first to March twenty-second, I believe, and that's the payment we're getting. Then the monthly filers and that stub week will file no later than April twentieth. And so we'll get payments, um, from that first March month, starting on April sixth.
And then we get them every month or quarterly?
We get them on a somewhat bi-weekly basis. And then there's a trip at the end, that if they've paid us too much, they'll take some money back, obviously.
You would, you would agree that getting that half percent in state law is very beneficial?
Absolutely.
We have one public hearing tonight starting the resolution authorizing the city manager. Or is Destiny to South Surplus City Home Park located at seventeen Main Street? And I will open that up to public hearing now. If you are attending in person and would like to speak, regarding, uh, this public hearing, just come down to the podium. You have five minutes. And if you're attending remotely, use your.
Mayor Council, staff, thank you. Uh, my name's William Hosmer, five zero seven Elizabeth Street. Uh, last November, so we entered into a joint RFP with, at the Doggs LLC to purchase this property. Over the course of the last three or four months, we've, um, done our due diligence. We believe we have received preliminary site plan approval. Um, we've secured the financing to develop this site. We believe that the development of this is, is. In line with the overall development of the Marina District and our lower LWRP. Excuse me. We're looking to move forward. In order to receive site plan approval, final site plan approval, we'll need the sale to go, move forward from the council. Um, so we're looking for that to happen tonight. If that does happen, we hope the sale can move forward quickly. We have construction slated to begin in late May, uh, early June. And then the sale being approved tonight. Also, I'd like to thank the staff, especially Ms. Smith, uh, for walking through this process. It's, uh. Been fun and we're looking forward to developing the city and the Marina District.
Thank you.
Are you gonna have a Pilsner?
Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone remotely?
I do not see any hands raised.
Good evening. My name is Michael Tully, Hamilton Street. I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. First, if I understand the presentation at your last meeting, department has will now make monthly presentations on a routine bend, meeting agenda item. And if so, I commend city council and the city manager for adding these reports to your meeting agenda. A suggestion pertaining to a monthly report from the city controller. I think city council should receive a monthly trial balance and budget report for all city government funds. During my years as a public school district business manager, I know these reports as well as bank reconciliations. Were presented to and acted on by the Board of Education each month. New York State education law might require this for school districts. I don't know for sure. But even if law does not require this for cities, I think it would be a wise practice. Tonight's meeting agenda includes a resolution pertaining to home rule legislation. The language promoted by counsel to reach at your last meeting. I think this is a prudent approach. I anticipate city council will approve. But I suggest city leaders plan a trip to Albany sometime soon, start knocking on some legislators' doors. They'll push with this much needed help to the city. Also, as I suggested in a previous meeting, please find a way to get the community involved in contacting the governor and legislative leaders in support of this resolution. Next, making ARPA monies available to homeowners to help fund interior and exterior work on their properties will be appreciated. A question, will landscaping include sidewalk repair or replacement? And if not, can sidewalk repairmen become eligible for this funding? The city at one time had a program providing residents funding to help stop, uh, to help with sidewalk replacement. A temporary assumption of this aid would be nice. Another question related to ARPA funds, this is with budget and accounting. I, I believe the revenue is budgeted in account A four oh eight nine federal reimbursement. Due to adopted budget, I do not see an associated expense budgeted. In many areas of the budget publication, there's a detail of revenue budgeted to support associated expenses on, on the page for that particular program or department. But when I look at the adopted twenty twenty-two budget, I just don't see that expense. So if, if administration could advise council and the public as to where those monies are budgeted on the expense side. And then also, I don't know if it's already there, but if the presentation on long-term debt, um, tonight could be posted to the city's website, I would appreciate that. And then finally regarding the twenty twenty-one financial report presented at the recent city council meeting. I thank city administration for this report. It is, for someone like me who focuses on finances. I thought it was quite thorough. Uh, 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 an observation about fund balance. In New York State, chapter five twenty-eight of the laws in two thousand give local governments the authority to carry over a quote. Reasonable amount of unappropriated unreserved fund balance from one year to the next. What constitutes a reasonable amount? Well, the Financial Restructuring Board report to the city states on page thirteen. That, uh, the New York State Government Finance Officers Association recommends maintaining a budget reserve of sixteen point seven percent. For two months worth of expenditures. The twenty twenty-one financial report presented recently states ending general fund balance, it began to twenty-one or six point one million. Of which five point seven six million is usable. This makes the usable fund balances a percentage of the twenty-two budget about forty-three point six percent. And I think an objective person would say this is in excess of a reasonable amount. And it suggests to me city finances could have been managed differently than they were the past two years. Time prohibits me tonight from elaborating on this, but I will resume my discussion on this next time I'm at a tender meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Cosmo for, uh, giving a great in-depth report. On our Augustburg Land Bank, uh, Corporation. Whatever this body can do to support that continued program should be one of the top priorities. And, uh, everyone who's sitting there in your positions and myself as a coach or whatever, we all like our pat in the backs. I like to give a pat in the back to the previous administration who had the foresight to get this program up and running. I think they deserve some credit. And, uh, along with Andrea Smith. Who, uh, who, who did, who did, uh, yeoman's work with the previous administration to get that. So whatever we could do to continue that program, I, I, I think it'd be who's this community and the, these people sitting here at this table. And, uh, the last thing I would just like to say is, uh, about a year ago, I stood here. And we were having a discussion about, we weren't getting support from our, our assemblyman and, and. Our politicians in Albany about the census tax. One of my recommendations to you people were, why don't you jump in the car? Why don't you get down there and knock on some doors? Get yourself on the second floor of Albany. On a consistent basis. Yes, we have Mr. Walzak. Yes, we have Ms. Ritchie. Okay. We can write so many letters. We can have so many meetings in there. All right. But they're going to need support from their constituents. And the people that's going to help get that support is you people sitting at this table. And the, the other thing was, was the, the, uh, on the long depth thing, uh, presentation. The, uh, uh, the, the price tag on, on the sewage plant, that was pushed down our throats. Okay. And we could sit here and blame it on anybody, but the state and federal government pushed that. And once again, I would say to you people, okay, get to Albany, get to Washington. You can send all, all the letters in the world, but they want to see your face. They want to see what you have. Make a present. You have all kinds of presentations in this council chamber. Put a presentation together and get yourself down there once a month, or even if you have to go twice a month. God knows we got some extra money now, we all say. And use the, you know, with the taxpayer, uh, and, and get down there and, and make yourself known. And make the presentation. It just might help. Okay. I know it's going to go in one ear and out the other because I'm standing here talking. Well, I really don't care because I'm a taxpayer. And I pay taxes as much as you here and some of you people a hell of a lot more. So do, do your due diligence. Okay? Get a committee here, get two or three people, get down there and pound on the doors. Let's not sit here and blame it. We sent a letter, we talked to somebody, it did do it. Make yourself known.
Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone remotely?
I do not see any hands raised.
And this brings us to correspondence. Uh, do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
And next we have our consent agenda. The planning is eliminated, the general fund warrant number zero six dash twenty twenty two, amount of six hundred ninety thousand five hundred forty two dollars and seventy seven cents. And library warrant number zero six dash twenty twenty two, amount of zero dollars. And capital fund warrant number zero six dash twenty twenty two, amount of one thousand nine hundred ten dollars. And community development fund warrant number zero six dash twenty twenty two, amount of zero. And community renewal fund warrant number zero six dash twenty twenty two, amount of zero dollars. As audited B and same nearby are ordered paid as a move. Kathy, would you please call them all?
Mayor's Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor Dilaba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Riche?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
We do not have any appointments tonight, so this brings us to items for complex action. First item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrew Smith.
Good evening, this is a resolution to approve the sale of surplus city-owned property. Whereas the city of Augsburg has acquired the following parcel in accordance with property tax sale foreclosure proceedings. And whereas the proposal submitted by River Street Brewing Company, RSBC, in response to the request for proposals issued by the city of Augsburg in September of 2021 is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city's Brownfield Opportunity Area Plan and comprehensive development goals. And whereas city staff has reviewed the complete response from RSBC and the parcel finding no conflict with the proposed sale, having no infrastructure or no known easements of public benefit. And whereas all property sold by the city of Augsburg is as is where is by quick claim deed, the city makes no warranty as to clear title or condition. And whereas all property within the city of Augsburg is subject to the provisions and enforcement of chapter ninety seven, section thirteen, property maintenance. And whereas sale of surplus property promotes a return of unreutilized property to the taxable role for the greater public benefit and keeping with comprehensive planning goals. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council approves the following sale. Tax map number forty eight point zero seven eight dash four dash four point one one. Location seventeen Main Street, there would be a restriction that the sale is subject to subdivision, there has been an attached survey. The parcel being sold is point five acres and would be transferred with a restrictive covenant to be defined in the purchase sale agreement. The sale price is ten thousand dollars and the buyer is William Hosmer on behalf of River Street Brewing Company LLC. Be it further resolved, said listed buyers are financially responsible for all applicable St. Lawrence County filing fees and be it further resolved that the sale of city-owned real property shall be subject to review and approval by the city attorney.
I'll move that.
Second.
Is the other party okay with the, it's not fifty fifty the land?
This is as proposed in their proposal.
Oh.
The pending subdivision is exactly as it was laid out in their proposal and then confirmed by a surveyor that was hired by the proposal proposers.
The other parties working on theirs or they're okay with everything?
Yeah, I believe the city manager has spoken with the Freyries.
We are, excuse me, as we spoke last meeting, now that we've got this part of the project moving forward, the Freyries now have their due diligence period going on, we expect to meet with them the next couple of weeks at the first interval for thirty days and continue moving through there.
All good news, I'm gonna add, Kathy, would you please call them all?
Councillor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Councillor Dilaba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Riche?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business.
Thanks Bill for the proposed investment.
Thank you. Our next item of business will be read by City Controller, Angela Gray.
This is a resolution authorizing the police department to pay for training, certification and associated expenses with funds from the forfeiture of the criminal proceeds account.
I'll move that.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Kathy, would you please call them all?
Mayor's Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor Dilaba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Riche?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrew Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the submission of an American Trails Trail Fund Application Grant. Whereas recreation trails do not receive the ongoing maintenance and support that they need through federal, state and local proportions process resulting in a huge trail maintenance backlog. And whereas the number one priority of the Trail Fund Grant application is to provide funds for maintenance of existing recreational trails. And whereas a total of up to fifty thousand dollars is being made available and the maximum request for funds is limited to fifteen thousand dollars with a required twenty percent match. And whereas the city's recreation director recommends applying for funds to support the maintenance needs of the city's Maple City Trail, including but not limited to resurfacing. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council supports the submission of this American Trails Trail Fund Application seeking up to fifteen thousand dollars for maintenance needs for the city's Maple City Trail. Be it further resolved that the Augsburg City Manager or his designee is hereby authorized to submit said grant application and if received, to enter into any necessary contracts to accept and administer said grant in a timely manner.
Second.
So after submitting this resolution and discussing it with the Public Works Director as well as the Recreation Director, we've identified what we call the Trafalgar Loop, which is just off of River Street. It's a sort of extension of the Maple City Trail. It is in need of resurfacing and we believe that cost alone to be about fourteen thousand dollars based on quotes we received from contractors. So the project would include resurfacing as well as tree removal and tree maintenance to kind of keep and open up that section of the trail to encourage people to use that. That is the primary route to get to the remainder of the Maple City Trail as opposed to Lake Street.
So is that, is that a trail or a street?
It's a trail, there's a loop in that park.
Oh, there is. Well, hopefully I'll be encouraged to use it.
Thank you. Kathy, would you please call them all?
Councillor Dilaba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Riche?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Manager, Steve Yollins.
A resolution to authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with Minicham Mendel Brzezinski, excuse me, and FJB LLC. Whereas there's a civil action pending in Supreme Court entitled Tubroberg LLC versus the city of Augsburg versus Minicham Mendel Brzezinski and FJB LLC. Whereas the city entered into a commercial property purchase agreement where the city agreed to sell and convey in its entirety to Tubroberg certain property located at thirty Main Street, Augsburg, New York, also known as the cheese plant. Whereas an order was entered into the action on July eighteenth, twenty seventeen whereby, among other things, the court granted summary judgment in favor of the city dismissing the complaint of Tubroberg LLC in its entirety. And whereas a judgment was entered in into the action on January fourteenth, twenty twenty in favor of the city against Brzezinski for the sum of three hundred and seventeen thousand fifty dollars and fifteen cents plus interest. Whereas a partial satisfaction of judgment in the amount of one hundred and twenty five thousand was entered into twenty twenty twenty. Whereas an order of contempt was entered into action on April eighth, twenty twenty one against Brzezinski for the total sum of four thousand dollars in costs and fines. Whereas it, whereas the desire of the parties to fully and finally settle, resolve and release all claims in between the parties which are or could have been subject to the action, subject to and upon the terms set forth in the release and agreement. Now therefore be it resolved, the Minicham Mendel Brzezinski and FJB LLC agree to pay the city of Augsburg a total sum of thirty thousand in full settlement of all claims and counter claims raised on behalf of the parties and in full satisfaction of the judgment and the contempt order in action. Be it further resolved, the city manager is authorized to execute any documents necessary to resolve the matter upon the approval of Barclay Damon Law Firm and the city attorney.
I'll, I'll introduce.
I'll second it.
Kathy, would you please call them all?
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Riche?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Councillor Dilaba?
Yes.
Approved.
Our last item of business will be read by City Manager, Steve Yollins.
A resolution requesting municipal home rule legislation that codifies the sales tax receipt sharing agreement as agreed to between the county of St. Lawrence and the city of Augsburg that the additional one percent sales tax being collected within the city of Augsburg be equally split between the two entities and that New York State take whatever legislative action is necessary to codify and effectuate this arrangement between the entities.
I want to do this.
Second it.
Kathy, would you please call them all?
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Riche?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Councillor Dilaba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
Does anyone have any thoughts?
I just heard one. Where are we at with opening City Hall five days?
Like you said, I think you can see the position that staffs in trying to, to keep things moving along. We that city staff thinks that they need that Friday to catch up on their work and goes to City Hall. I think we should just leave it like it is.
I know we talked about doing a possible like poll to find out if we're going to be closed four days, closed a day, what day of the week it should be, have we made any progress on that?
Excuse me, we have, and it will go out first of next week. I wanted to let it run for about fifteen days, so I mean, ultimately to answer your question, that's where ours is, getting the survey prepared well.
Okay, so next week?
Yes.
This brings us to new business, new business.
I'm just eager to get on that conference call with OMH in regards to the surplus land, I talked to Steve about that. I think the Swatsons off of Proctor Avenue, I think everybody's seen their request for some surplus land, Maple Street. It's behind the land that we agreed to sell to another party, remember that one? So that's based on everybody, so I'd like to see that move forward. And you're looking into the Hydradam, there's a whole bunch of issues there. I'm curious about that, I don't know any update, but it's.
We'll have a, we'll have a full update for council. Likely executive session at the next meeting, it's, it's currently a matter of litigation based on them challenging their assessment, but I expect it to go to another level of litigation to, to get back control of what's going on, so it's a uh, you know, you all are, most of you are on council in this, the latest version of this went to ampersand, so there's a lot of layers of this. The rules changed in between a couple of times, as did the ability for the city to authorize its own pilot agreements, among other things. So we're trying to get all the layers peeled back now and then hopefully have a negotiation with the company that will get us where we're likely going anyway without having to spend a lot of time lawyering and maneuvering through the courts to do that. So again, a lot of layers, the city attorney is working it with their, their legal and the school district legal to to be able to provide both boards with exactly where the matter stands.
I was just thinking about the cheese plant and wondered if we ought to think about you know, maybe marketing that property for ninety to a hundred and eighty days, just to see if we can you know, find another interested party that might create some jobs. I don't know, but do you think it's worth it, rather than, I know we're probably getting bids now for demo or?
The current, the current course of action, Andrea's staff and I are finalizing tomorrow. The plan is to be able to just get it, get the cleanup done. I'd like to get bids for someone to come and remove all the tanks on the exterior and then clean up all the garbage, the trees on the exterior, all the garbages on the outside, all the garbages on the inside. Basically, if it's not attached to the building, get it cleaned out, boarded up and in a presentation form, right now it would be difficult to safely let any potential buyers look at the property or gain access. So what the, what the current staff course of action is to do is just to get it, to get it cleaned up and get it ready then to come to council and say, you know, where do we, where do we go for from here? I think once we get it to that level too, it'll, it'll be a good opportunity for members of council to come and take a look so you can make a decision. There certainly are some parts of the building that are more viable than others. I don't know what, you know, it would be a big project for someone to salvage it, but it's gonna be a big project to tear it down. So, yeah, yeah. So I think our, again, our plan is to get the bids to get all the tanks removed, get everything cleared out, get down to the, to the building shell itself, there's just a lot of debris, things that were left behind that are largely garbage, some scrap value. Hopefully we can offset a good majority of our disposal costs with the value of some of the tanks that are good on the inside and some of the metal that's, that's in there as well. So that's what we're aiming towards the weather is to the point now where we can, we can get in there and do it.
Do we lose the value or the opportunity if we take the tanks out before we market it or?
Well, I mean, if, if you were thinking that someone was going to open a cheese plant perhaps, I guess you could look at it that way, I just don't know the viability of somebody ever operating that again as a, as a cheese plant. Again, maybe if somebody wants to, we can certainly don, you know, proper protective clothing and lighting so you can take a look at it. I don't see where it's, it would be viable in the state that it's in now, somebody would have to do significant renovations, at least to the tanks on the outside. Most of them are long contaminated with products that were left behind them, I don't see where most of them are salvageable. Most of the people that want them want them for scrap value. A couple of people right now we've had interest wanna, you know, clean them and use them for maple sap collection. Tanks on the inside, those are all in, in fact, some of them look like they haven't been used. But an initial goal would be just to get the exterior rim cleaned up, just so it's not such a, an eyesore on the neighborhood. You know, as we just heard tonight, the Hosmers have significant plans, the Freyries certainly are working on significant plans and I'm just trying to make prudent moves to get our stuff cleaned up. But again, it wouldn't cost us anything to get a, you know, to get it for sale and put it up while we're going through this to see. I just think the types of organizations and people that may be in the market for these places know it's there, you know, like they've looked at it. But again, it wouldn't hurt anything, it's gonna take us, even we start advertising tomorrow, it'll take us, you know, sixty, ninety days to get things in place and get a contractor on site to do it, so we could, we could try it as is, I just.
Yeah, I don't think it would be like a large producer, but maybe some of these craft cheese outfits. I know the Amish had a difficult time at one point in time finding a place for their facility.
Yeah.
But then there's, there's craft cheese producers. I, I just think it's, you know, to do it for three months or six months give somebody a contract and an incentive, you know, maybe it would save us quite a bit of money. Take that responsibility, maybe it'd end up with some jobs.
Yeah, I, I think it's another, it's just one of those things where we're, we're just gonna play, how much longer do we, do we wait to do things? And I, again, I'll bring you back, obviously council has to approve any contracts, I, I don't know what the bids will look like. I think there is some significant value. So I'm looking forward to having the facility cleaned up for a little cost to the city based on the offsetting value of the, of the scrap and the things that.
No, I mean, I made the larger.
No, I know, I'm just saying, we're just trying to move through it, because I, I don't know, I don't know if it isn't, doesn't look more marketable if we just have it cleaned up, trying to, and kinda, it's been sitting there for a while and I don't know, I feel like the longer we let it sit there, it's the longer it sits there, so I but, but I certainly we could, there's nothing says we just couldn't get it listed now and just, you know, get it out there, let people see the information. There's a lot of, there's a lot of damage inside the west side facility where the tanks are on the exterior there where the, where the interior tanks came into, the tanks are gone, but the roof is entirely collapsed into that end. So I see it for being, being tear down. There is again, you know, part of the old concrete area that's, you know, it's very strong and durable and somebody could renovate that, but I don't know.
I think it's a hindrance to the development of that whole area. It's an eyesore.
Could be an asset of, you know, the craft cheese.
Well, you know, the Amish did the world renewal and then they had a plan off that off.
Just so hard to find jobs, I like that story too. Just so hard to find jobs. I I like that story too.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd like to see it give us a shot for, you know, just a multiple listing for, like I say, you know, three months, six months, and then we would know for sure that and and by then maybe we'd be in a better position in terms of if we have to demolish it. I don't know.
Is there a little stuff stolen right now?
Oh, no, sir. We completed that last year with the EPA's assistance taking everything out. So now we're down to now we're just down to scrap.
We've been dealing with this cheese plant for twelve years. I'd like to say get rid of it.
Yeah.
Be good riddance.
Yeah, I agree with you. Tear it down.
So I I want to be clear, I'm and I'm not anywhere near talking about tear down yet. I'm I'm just talking about getting getting the exterior cleaned up so we can get a good picture out of it, just getting the first layer of of stuff gone that we can gone, get it cleaned up, make it safe so that we don't have to keep chasing people in and out of it. It's a haven for cats and stray animals and I mean, it's we just need to get it. Again, it's it's an eyesore, especially as we're looking at now having a brand new facility right across the street. I just want to keep keep moving. But again, we can, we can put it out on a listing on something. We can do that right away.
Get a consensus. We want to have consensus now.
I'd like to get the outside cleaned up.
I'd like to take a walk through it too.
Get the outside cleaned up and then list it, is what you're saying?
I mean, if there's a salvageable structure there, you know, substantial.
That's fine with me.
You know, but. And I think we'll know more once we get all the garbage cleaned up, what's what's there, what looks salvageable.
Steve, I'd like to do a walk through too.
Nick, I mean, I didn't get to do the walk through two twelve fourth street till the end to where if you looked from the outside, you'd say, well, you know, it's the last of downtown, which is would have been wonderful to save, but lo and behold, when the third floor is in the basement, it's time to walk away.
Stop it up. Last thing I had was just to reiterate about having someone from Dank or County Planning to talk to us about Community Development, the Black Grant. Because that'll be coming up in July and you certainly need, you know, months to 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 get an application together. So.
Um, any items for discussion, anyone?
I have one. Spectrum, we have a contract, I believe, or they have a right to physically sell to us in the city. Here we, I don't know what you want to call it, but since they're not here and in, rather than say even a couple of days for equipment swap outs for old people or people that don't drive or can't get to their other places. I think we should take a really good look at them and what fees are charging. Maybe a possible negotiation as far as cutting fees for the citizens of the city that pay an outrageous amount of internet cable bills. And since they walked out on us, I think they owe us something.
The only thing I got is a fire department. We got the page from the other department. So next council meeting, can you get that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, this brings us to citizen participation. Anyone attending in person, like the address council, now in forty minutes.
Yes, Michael Tulley again. In the past few days, there were comments made in the media by the mayor and city manager about the efforts of the Skelly administration to help the city avoid bankruptcy. This has been a common pronouncement of theirs over the past two years. As I stated in the past, at the time this council came into existence in twenty twenty, the city was not on verge of bankruptcy. In simple terms, bankruptcy means an entity does not have the resources to pay its bills. But information in the twenty twenty one financial report shared with you, as well as review of fund balance history since twenty sixteen, shows the city is more than capable of paying its bills on January one, twenty twenty. The fund balance history shows its low point, as Angel referenced earlier tonight, twenty sixteen, of six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The fund balance increased in each of the next three years. At the end of twenty nineteen, the fund balance was two million, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. In a recent Spectrum news piece, Mayor Skelly is quoted saying the Financial Restructuring Board, their prediction of twenty twenty bankruptcy, this was real. I did my own fact checking on behalf of the media and the community. Over the weekend, I read again twenty nineteen report to the city from the Financial Restructuring Board. And nowhere in the report do I find the word bankruptcy or bankrupt. What the report focuses on is a serious issue, as it should, as has been talked about tonight, is the encroachment of the city's tax levy to its constitutional tax limit. The report projected if trends continued, the city could reach its constitutional tax limit between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty eight. Encroachment on the city's constitutional tax limit is a separate issue compared to bankruptcy. And in my opinion, to interpret the issue of encroachment on the constitutional debt limit to bankruptcy, uh, excuse me, tax limit to bankruptcy is a misreading of the board's report. So I think you need to change your messaging. The report cites fiscal stresses the city was faith in in twenty nineteen that you have been a drug, but bankruptcy is not one of those stresses. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone remotely?
The first individual is registered as Greg McNamara and I will unmute that indivi-
Hello, can you hear me?
Individual now. It appears you are self muted, sir.
I'm not self muted, no. Hello, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Mr. McNamara? It appears you are self muted. It appears your line is open, sir. Mr. McNamara, can you hear me?
Hello? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Am I being? Yeah. If anyone can hear me, I keep getting muted by the organizers.
That's raised, Mayor, and his line is showing.
Right, the system's garbage that you guys got. So if anyone can hear me, this system is garbage.
Dev, I'm not sure if he's experiencing technical difficulty on his end.
We do not have a need for executive session, so I will make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?